This year's Cog presentations, we've got several to go through tonight. We could be here for three hours. So staff, we've already been here for quite a while. We'd like to make sure you get home as soon as possible. I appreciate your attendance tonight. We'd like to welcome County Executive George Daines, who joined. As County Executive, replacing Dave, we'd like to welcome you, Mr. Daines.
Mayor, appreciate that.
Like I said, we have a pretty good agenda for tonight. A lot of projects to go through, good projects. So we'll go ahead with introductions and we'll begin with Morgan.
Megan Isaac, minutes?
George Daines, Cash County Executive.
Ed View, Smithfield City.
I'm David Woodamalgas.
Black Rival, there it is.
Larry Jacobson from Nibley.
Paul Erickson, Richmond.
Jeff Hall, Lewiston.
Holly Gaines, Logan.
Lindsay Peterson, on Logan.
Kathleen Alder Providence.
Frank Hidalgo, Corstun.
Jesse Mott, Cash County Staff of the Cog.
Jeff Gilmore with the CMPO and Staff of the Cog.
Okay, thank you.
I know we have a mayor online.
Yeah. Okay, online, I'm sorry.
Mike Benson from Newton.
Online.
Mike Benson from Newton.
Mike, you on?
Yeah, but I don't know why you can't hear me. Mike Benson from Newton.
Okay.
And I'm Dallas Wall. I'm with WCG. I was hired by Jesse Mott to do the safety evaluations.
Yes, thank you for joining us, safety evaluation. Anybody else?
I think the other ones are just note papers.
We're adjusting the volume so we can hear all online better. Mike, could you speak up again?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, that's it.
Okay.
Okay, welcome to you online as well. Let us know if there's any problems, pick up difficulties and try to get it fixed quick. Next on our agenda is to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion or any discussion on the agenda?
Comment there. For those that got a hard copy, I should have given you a new one. The line that was added was approval of the agenda. So. We go with the agenda that has that on it. I mailed those and then realized I didn't make it on them, so I'm. Those that had, those that got it from the link, got it. There's a few years ago, hard copy mailing that slipped through the cracks and then I realized that. But I'd want to make that point at this point.
I want you to approve the agenda.
I second it.
Okay, let's state names. Ed View's moved to approve and Jeff Hall seconded. All in favor? Aye, aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion is approved. Next is to review and approve of our May 5 meeting minutes. Are there any discussions on that? If not, I will entertain most of the approval of minutes.
David Woodamalgas.
Okay, Kathleen Alder Providence, David Woodamalgas, first and seconded. All in favor? All right.
Aye.
Be opposed? Okay. Meetings, the meetings of May 5th are approved. Dave, motion on. This year's 2025 Cog Award amount is seventeen point five millions approximately. It should probably go up a little bit more when we get interest included in that as effect.
Yeah, we haven't been getting the interest till the end of the year. So as we, we set that number at seventeen million when we met at the beginning of the year. What that means is that the revenues every month have been a little higher than we estimate. So that allows us to kind of balance at this point. In the cog cycle, and we're seeing about seventeen point five. There's one or two jurisdictions that. Were we working with that kind of after their projects, then I have a little bit of money that rolls back into that pot. And we'll try to finalize that over this week. But those numbers will be, when we send out the summary of the rankings, that number will be finalized. But we wanted to kind of take that from that seventeen million that we were sitting at, up to that seventeen point five. We'll get that down within a sense before we send out an email next week. A notice next week for the upcoming.
Okay. With that seventeen point five million, we have requests in excess of twenty-five million.
Yes.
Next, that's twenty-five million. So tonight, as we go through the projects, I think it's vitally important that you're asking questions, if you have questions on the projects. So we don't, once we get this all, we're fully informed when we go to vote on how long to rank them. So we've got a big job ahead of us tonight. Seventeen million, twenty-five million in requests.
So it looks like a thirty-two.
About thirty-two million, that's right. We have a big, our work cut out for us tonight. So please, you learn to ask questions of these projects so we have fair understanding. So we can vote responsibly and get the projects that need to be funded and funded. Any questions on the amount?
Rural set aside is about two million, maybe like two point one, but approximately that two million dollar. Yeah, so out of the seventeen point five, there's one point five percent that comes out. And goes to the county for the administration to pay for my position. Again, that's kind of a law, but it's worth. Use multiple years worth of funds, so that one and a half percent comes out. And that leaves about two point one for the rural set aside. And then about fifteen point one-ish. Again, that ballpark for the urban area. So for those, any area of projects that we would just assign that out, that's about fifteen point one, fifteen point two million.
Good question. Any other questions on the funding? Okay. Let's go ahead and get into discuss. The projects, the data scoring first, and then we'll go into the presentations. So. Then Jesse discuss the data-driven scoring results.
Okay, so again, you also seen this in your packets, whether it was emailed or hard copy. This was, as we went through and we applied the data-driven scoring that's in the policy manual to. Do all different projects. This is how it shook out. So for those, just a little reminder, we, as staff, we go through and we apply. The scores of review applications, plan sets to assign those points out. Then we meet with. With jurisdictional staff and we review that. So most people have someone that comes to that meeting, we talk about it. They have opportunity to raise questions. Hey, did they feel we did something wrong? Was there something maybe we didn't recognize? And then we take what we have plus those, and we take it to the Cog Executive Committee. Which is Mayor Aldago, Mayor Cox, and Executive Daines, and we go through and talk through this. And they kind of approve that final recommendation and bring that to the Cog as that data-driven scoring. So.
I'd like to get some, just your, your information. When the executive committee met on this, we had a two-hour discussion pool. And went through each and every one of them. So we could clearly understand Brian Cox, George Daines and myself. Brian had a lot of comments. Mr. Daines had a lot of comments, so Brian, and we got some understanding there. That's why I'm asking you, hey, because you're going to have some of these questions as well. But we felt like with what we had and were given, we need to go forward in total and not try to take any of them off this point.
So again, I think one of the ones to point out a lot on is, is the safety story again as. As we went through that process last year, there was some different concerns raised by different jurisdictions, different staff. And we, we reevaluated that process from last year to this year. So as part of that, Dallas Wall, the safety consultant. He came up and we went and visited pretty much all those projects that were eligible for safety points. So. Again, we don't give safety points to new roads and we don't give safety points to maintenance projects. But any project that had. Some type of widening or capacity or some of those improvements, he came up, he went, he visited those. We looked at. Actual crash data, or Dallas looked at the actual crash data versus what the models predict those should be. So it was definitely a more. In-depth study than we've done in the past. So.
This you should have in your packets. That's the safety stat.
Yeah, so I think there's like.
Pictures and everything.
Fifteen pages from Dallas's kind of summary of his visit to those projects.
It was a significant improvement over the last years.
What came from that. So again, that, there was a cost to that a little bit, but I think generally the results of it were. Were worthwhile. So again, I think, were there specific questions? I don't want to go through all of these. Again, we could be here all night, but we do have Dallas Wall, welcome someone to go on to do the safety analysis. And if there's any specific questions that people have, we're willing to try to explain it or answer those if there, if there are any. Okay, hearing none, we'll keep going. Dallas, thank you for, yeah, Dallas was on just in case there were questions related to the safety. Dallas, we appreciate that. You're free to, to jump off. We'll go to the next one, the cog staff memo. Again, it was brought up with, I think about two years ago that there was a session on being able to have cog staff provide. Some insight recommendation, kind of look at the analysis of the project. We worked on putting this together for all the projects. There's some general. Kind of concepts at the front. Again, we always talk about development and what can development do versus what's the responsibility of the cog. There was something on there about costs again. Again, that's one we, that comes up again and again. There was more of that. We had a lot of discussion with the Cog Executive Meeting. About costs and how we look at those and how you evaluate those and try to do that, that effectively. That's a hard task with. All the different units and things. But I think as we had that discussion, at this point, this round needs to roll forward and that's something that, that can be presented with. With a future round. So again, this is put together by cog staff. There's no input from the other mayors or anything like that. We try to present. Our opinion, our review of those projects without being kind of. Take our side, help represent our project better. We created it independently of any of that. So that's for your review. As you score the projects, again, same thing. If there's any questions on that, we'd be willing to take those or discuss those now.
I'd like to thank the staff and what they put together here. In reminding the cog, this is a direct result of what you asked for last year after our meeting. This is what they put together. They've answered, in my view, what we request them to do. So I sure appreciate what they've done. The information they provided as I went through it. It provides me a whole lot better picture of what's been asked of, and what I've had in the past. So I hope you appreciate what they've done. If it's not being objective, please let me know. So we can pass it on, continue the process. So any questions as far as what they provided in their. Review?
Just appreciation to Dallas. This is really good. His, his analysis with the pictures. He, he did a great job.
So again, having them be up here, again, we'll have the jurisdiction staff, there's some questions, we've looked at a few things. So. Dallas is, is the expert. He does it all for you. Dot is probably the best in the state, even this region and this type of thing. So. Everybody's willing to work with us to do these little projects that, that we do, but that are important to the Cog.
I thought the cog project review was really excellent.
Thank you. We try. So again, if there's improvements or recommendations, we're willing to take those. So. We can give the mayor what, what they're looking for as they prepare to do the ranking of the projects. The other one that we have that we do is, there's the technical review log that we send out. To that jurisdictional staff to go ahead and review, review, ask questions. And then we give the applicants an opportunity to respond and then respond. And then against cog staff, we might throw something in there, or hey, we feel that's been addressed. And let it move on. So if you get a hard copy mailing, I would have just passed this out. Otherwise, this would have been on the link in your email. So again, if there's any questions on this, I'm willing to, we're willing to answer those or try to have some discussion.
Brian might use this extensively in our executive review. This is very good. We went through it beforehand. I'm not sure if Executive Daines had a chance to see it first. This gave us some good information. We could ask questions on three of these projects. I highly recommend you have a breath through it. We put three bigger.
Again, we didn't get a lot of comments on it, but we've tried to provide it out there for people to provide, ask questions, provide feedback, look for flaws. Anything like that. So again, we, there's a lot of information. So hopefully you've had time to look at it or you can't look at it, but if there are questions on this. If you get more questions, we'll. It was early, like Friday at lunchtime. If it's not working, please let me know. I've tried to do it. I tried to check it.
Mayor Alder says she hasn't got it.
Oh, awesome.
It would have been in the big email with the agenda.
And I put on the link that just said, going to be posted later.
Okay, I'll look again. And again, I would even put other, if you have some questions as you review it, let us, if you have questions for staff, we can try to provide you with. Answers as well. So again, it is, by the time everything comes in, we roll that process, it is a quick one and something is taking a little longer unfortunately than. Than we like. So. But you're going to have some time to complete your scoring. So you'll have opportunity to kind of review this too.
The link works in the email.
Okay, I checked. I tried it because I had saved it as one thing and re-saved it as another. So. Okay, if there are concerns or you have an issue, I can resend it out. So we want to make sure people can get the information that they can. So.
I would like to know if the mayor's going through, we go through this and you have time to deal. The information and if you're going, I'd like to know if this is better than what we've done in the past. To see if it's going to be like which.
Okay.
Made potatoes.
We'll just, the only order these are based off of is the order, you kind of just assign those initial numbers based on how the applications. Applications come in. So we'll just run down the list. Again, we'll try to. Shoot for about that five minutes. Just, there's opportunity to be here all night. And I think everyone else, as important as this is, everyone else has a life. So. We'll kind of run a timer and try to give you a one-minute notice if you're, if you're still seeming to be long-winded at that point. So. We'll kind of let who, let you know who's going and who's next. So that person can be ready. You'll have to try to, this room's not very wide. So you'll have to try to work your way up and around. You might have to slide behind Mayor Wood over there. Or squeeze through here if you're filling, so like you can squeeze through. We do have a, we do have a slide clicker. And a pointer on here. So if you want to be able to point at things in your presentation, well, you click through it at your pace. So. With that, we'd start with Logan City and then Smithfield City would, we'll follow them. We should have moved a few more chairs to, we usually have the podium, but. All right. Thank you very much. Apologizing in advance. Normally you'd have Sam on here tonight doing this. He's much better looking than I. He had some family obligations, so everybody's able to do that. I'm Paul Lindhart with Logan City, Public Works Director of Logan City. I'll present our project. Application this evening. As you've seen, we're applying for improvements on the four hundred north and six hundred west intersection. And corridors nearby. Maybe. You might have to look at me. I'm in. I'm happy to move on. Okay, now it's, okay, now it's clicking through. Okay, first, first slide. I realize that's probably too small to see the details on the right side. But I know you all commit that to memory already. It's the twenty twenty five, twenty fifty CMPO Regional Plan. Identifying some need for the project, the four hundred north corridor highlighted in the circle, project R one fifty. Is a phase one project. That connection of four hundred north, six hundred west is identified as a phase two project. Green line going north and south are eighteen. This project, just very similar to some of Logan City's previous applications. The eighteen hundred north, six hundred west intersection, fourteen hundred north, six hundred west intersection, and most recently one thousand north. Is a key east-west connection corridor. As we try to improve and increase the number of east-west connections. Also, north-south corridor along six hundred west, we've done a lot of work on that corridor and continuing to do so. Connection to a lot of regional areas, Utah State University, Logan Canyon. And then also, there'll be significant improvements with pedestrian and motorist. We'll build it in that area as well, along with the project. With the railroad crossing specifically. Getting to the project scope with a little more detail, a few things I point out. That first and largest bowl in the middle. Will be a signalized intersection at six hundred west, yeah, six hundred west and four hundred north. That will include traffic legalization and also integration with the railroad crossing. Along with improving pedestrian and motor safety and the missing section of the four hundred north just west of six hundred. Of four hundred north just west of six hundred west. There's also just west of the project limits. We've had a lot of development going on. The Homestead Development, you've seen there, they put in that entire section through there at a moment. Matching the width and improvements of this project will do well. Six hundred west will have one lane in each direction. It will add turn lanes as an improvement and pedestrian improvements on the east side of six hundred west sidewalk connecting throughout the entire project. The east of six hundred west portion on four hundred north. Will match the existing right-of-way that goes east all the way to Main Street. It's approximately ninety-nine to one hundred foot wide right-of-way. It will match that existing right-of-way as well. On this project, I just want to point out, we've had a lot of involvement with the neighborhood. Neighborhood meetings where they're giving input, how to preserve the neighborhood bill, and at the same time make these improvements. To not preclude any future growth and capacity issues as well. And that's, that's gone very well. We appreciate it. We use that as a model now. On several, several projects since then. Outside the limits that are identified here, so it's outside the funding as well. Logan City will continue. Continue some pedestrian improvement specifically going east on four hundred north and farther west, closer to eight fifty west. The schedule for the project, we've done two or three years of previous work with specifically right-of-way and railroad. Coordination. Our intention is to. Bid this project one year from right now in the fall of twenty-six and build it immediately thereafter. During twenty twenty-seven, be completely done within two years. Funding, as you've seen in the application, the overall project cost will approximately eight point three million. We are requesting five point eight million with a one point four million dollar match. Equalling about a twenty-five percent match from Logan City. This number right here is Logan City money put into the project. We're just not including it as part of the match. But it didn't have an almost fifty percent master match on the project. But that's just additional cash from Logan City. And lastly, we were asked to do updates on previous project awards. These are not all of them, but the most recent ones. Any of them in green are projects that have all been. Completed and completely closed out with the cog. The only one on the list right now with pending funding, funding from the cog is the one that we received last year. One thousand north and six hundred west. And dates on that project, we plan to bid that this fall in twenty twenty-five. With intent in construction in twenty twenty-six to be completed. So that should be the only project Logan City has on the progress record. And with that and my non-remaining time, I'll be my best to answer any questions, man.
Well, I have a question from Tenth West. You're going to come up the highway and then have to jog over it, that way that works? Or have you got. Some plan to go from Tenth West down to the highway in front of the jail, through that area?
West of Tenth West?
Yes.
If I'm understanding it correctly. That's like I'll be on do. On your map.
Yeah, at this point, we're not.
There's, there's no improvements intended with this project down there. It would be between five fifty west and seven hundred west.
I understand.
Okay.
But isn't the eventual plan go straight through and come down the length of the highway there?
Right now, there's not a plan. In the master transportation plan for both you and Logan City.
There was a picture you showed after this one.
Big scale. That one?
No.
Sorry, no.
Right there, okay. It shows you coming down and see how that, that Tenth West, it jogs down and then loops down to the. Two hundred north. That, that was designed that way when the jail was put in.
Correct. And there's, there's an existing road there today. We don't have plans to make that larger or.
Or to make a real connection at that point. You're going to come up to Tenth West, take a left, go north, and then take a right on this.
You could, correct. And I guess if the question is, will SR thirty move to four hundred north? That's not ours or UDOT's intention today. This, this will give people the option to either go straight like they do today or to make that jog day trip, correct? One of the challenges about George is the spacing between fourth north and the signal on second north is. Would be a challenge for you not to signalize that. So it's, it's a bit of a.
It's too tight.
It's too tight. And one thing we're doing with this project, knowing should UDOT change the signal as, signal plan on Tenth West. And they want to pursue moving the signalized intersection from here to here. We're making sure that nothing on this project would preclude that happening, but we're not building that infrastructure to work. Thank you very much. And Smithfield City. And then Lewiston will be up after.
So Smithfield will apply for some spot improvement money. It's, let me go and switch you. It's not part of the corridor, but was there a pointer on here?
Yes. Your facts.
The bottom.
This doesn't count as my five minutes.
We'll restore. I'm sorry.
So it is a spot improvement. The two fifty was planned to be. Part of the corridor agreement, part of the corridor route, but. With developments to the south list, it may or may not go through. The group that was here. Forty minutes ago, the CMPO did approve money for a study. To see how we can continue that route through. So. Some of the suggestions have been to put it on first needs. Some of the suggestions are to put it back on two fifty with some curves. But either way, this area right here. Whether the route ends up on being one hundred or on being two fifty would be a connection. For the light down here on Tenth to come over, there would be a jog and then it would go up here to Skyview. Both of the way up to Skyview. So that would leave a connection right now. I don't know how many of you have been up there, but a lot of people are using this through this multifamily. Anyway, this, this right here would be where the. That went too far in it. Right here would be where the road would continue. There was a question on the survey as if, why it wasn't put in with this development. At the time, Smithfield City, this, this is all owned by one owner. Smithfield City had. The right to take property if it was part of a subdivision or if it was commercial development. And it was not taken at that time. Since then, we have acquired this property. And so we're looking for spot improvements to go further south. Then we're in the county and there's not been, we've asked the owners to the south if they would be interested in. Swapping property or possibly letting us put that road in and they don't, don't have any interest in it. Which would actually line up better with Tenth South. So on this, it would be a sixty-six foot right-of-way. It would be a sixty-six foot right-of-way. We would only build. The property that we own right now of that sixty-six foot right-of-way. So whatever curve we get or sidewalk. On the north side and then on the south side would be up to future development to put that in on. And then on the south side would be up to future development to put that in on the south side. Um, this is the road design. We had the, uh, geotech geotech done. Um, and then groundwater, there isn't any groundwater there. And so we would have, uh, elevations. I wanted you to see how flat it is there, um, coming from two fifty down to where it would connect into one hundred. We'd have the storm water. We collect and put this on into an existing storm yard. So we, we build that short section of road, put the lights in. Uh, it'd be services on the north side. We don't know exactly where, but I, I mean, on the south side, but on the north side. You can see it's all, all developed out. Um, we'd have a intersection. And as I said, it would be a spot improvement for that future development. This is an existing shot of the storm water would be right in the planters strip. We're asking to put the sidewalk in, curb gutter and then the asphalt. Took that picture mainly so you can see that the stormwater pond is actually irrigated. It's not, uh, it's not naturally green and beautiful like that. It's a stormwater pond. And then. Yes.
Can I?
Oh, sorry.
Somehow I got out of the meeting, so let me get back in for those that are. I apologize.
Where's my five minutes?
I got you. I got it.
Have you considered, does it make more sense to use that funding on the regional road just to the south?
If the CMPO's money was set aside and we knew that's where it was going to be. It would possibly make more sense, but we don't know that and that is still in the county. And we have asked the people to the south if they would be willing to exchange this property for theirs. So I, I don't want to give you an honest answer. I don't have one.
I'd like to follow along with my question.
Yeah.
So what, if I understand you correctly, you're only building partial road.
Yes.
With the anticipation that the, the neighbors to the south will finish that road if and when they develop it.
Yes. Yeah, forty-five, I think it was forty-five feet.
So it's barely a two lane road.
Yeah, by the time you get the sidewalk in, it would be the possibility for two to twelve foot length.
Do you have any anticipation of when that will matter for her?
When I've talked to the people in the south, not in their lifetime. But that's it changed. How old are they? Yeah.
Is it time constraint that you're working under? Like, is there a time push for this project?
No, not, not other than none of them. We're trying to get traffic to Skyview from either two fifty or one hundred, and we have the light at tenth now. So as far as the time constraint, it is mostly to prevent people from going in the middle of that multifamily.
You have a question?
Yeah, I, I, I can, I'll quit being so rude. You don't have to leave.
I'm up next. They're gonna get my butt over here and be ready.
I guess that's my secret.
Okay.
Mayor Benson, are you seeing the presentation?
Our folks that are online, are you seeing the PowerPoint?
Yeah. Yes, so right now I don't see it.
Let me open this and let me make sure you can see it. I just, when I'm seeing the preview slides, I'm seeing different than what you're seeing on the slide deck, so I want to make sure that. Are you seeing the presentation, Mayor?
Yes, I am now.
Jeff, I'm Mayor Lewiston. We don't come to the cog very often. Uh, we have a unique situation. Slide two, please. We don't have a unique situation in Lewiston in the fact that this is Preston. People coming out of Preston. I'll admit this slide is drawn wrong. I've been in a tractor fifteen hours a day the last three weeks chopping corn. I didn't have as much time to proof these slides as I should have. But anyway, people come out of Preston, they come right to here. This is the Utah border. And then they continue two miles. Well, this is the Utah border. Then they continue two miles to sixty-one. They come west one mile and then they come down our sixteen hundred west. That takes them out to one forty-two. Once they get to one forty-two, they're on the west side of the valley. We have feed trucks, milk trucks, all the vehicles that are going to Shriver's Cheese and the Gosner's Foods are taking those routes. All of the feed trucks that come from IFA are taking this route into Preston. The unique problem that we have right now is we have so much Franklin County traffic coming through Lewiston. I've talked to every resident through our project there. This right here is Wrightland. The cog did this project a few years ago from one forty-two up to our two thousand south. They actually didn't give us any points for it because it was more than two years away. But we were being prudent to make sure we had our money. It took us more than two years to get our money to come back to the cog. So we lost five points right there. But anyway, we came back to there. We, I've talked to all the residents on that road. They all claim that our traffic is up thirty to fifty percent over the last seven to ten years. If you go back in Lewiston's population, statistically speaking, we have not had a growth rate of zero. We have the same statistical people in Lewiston today that we did ten years ago, and yet our traffic on that road has increased. Like I say, fifty percent, most of the neighbor, most of the people along that road are saying. So what we're asking for is we want to be able to come from two, we're gonna come from Oakdale Lake Farm. We're gonna widen from there to two thousand south. That road was rebuilt as part of the cog project four years ago. And then from there up to eight hundred south, a mile and a half, we would rebuild the road. Next slide, please. Oh, you can go back. Sorry. There's the way we'd rebuild the road right there. I'm not getting into the technical crap on it. Next slide, please. So this is the safety thing. We're gonna make it so that we have a twenty-four foot road of asphalt. We looked at going twenty-six feet. We, our intention on this is we want to make it safer for our residents that are along that road, our people that drive along that road. Our people that walk and run and exercise and push their strollers on that road. We don't want any more traffic on that road. We'd invite all of you to come out to Lewiston during the day and see it. Don't buy land. Don't build a house. Uh, after you've seen it, go back to where you live. Next slide, please. This is just a slide to show you the width of some of the farm equipment that we have on this road. Next slide, please. So we're requesting two million dollars. We have a hundred and sixty-one thousand almost in match. It's the requirement. We have a lot of roads in Lewiston. We used to be able to get cover eight miles a year with our road budget of classy road funds to chip and seal. We budget twenty-five percent more money and we can't even cover four miles of road to get that done. I'm sure you all know the same thing. So we're coming to the cog to see if we can get some funding for that project. Any questions?
I'm just curious on your traffic counts. Do you have numbers to give us an idea? You gave us like percentages, but.
So we have some traffic counts that the sheriff's office did. Uh, but biggest problem that we have with those is Lindsay is we count motorcycles and tractors. And our average speeds are so far off because we have all kinds of tractors going fifteen miles an hour. And then we have all kinds of motorcycles and people flying by. So yes, we have traffic counts. We did not feel that they were very useful in any of these numbers. And we didn't have anything back from fifteen years ago or from ten years ago.
I mean, like, no, well, you're.
Oh, that's a good question. I don't know that. Any other questions?
There might be some numbers. If you go into the online under the applications, the application information, and there were some traffic counts provided that date back over a certain range. I can remember all those numbers, but there might be some things there. Eric knows he's up next.
Yep.
New in it in Amalva. Eric, it might be both, might be you. That's a pointer and then down from the.
Can I switch to a new wifi system? Where you have to log in to get guest wifi. And it's not working very well. Sorry, give us just one.
So Mayor Wood, you want to come do the next one? Just wing it.
Mayor Benson, are you seeing this?
Not right now. I'm just seeing all of you.
How we look?
Are you seeing this now?
It's it's trying to bring it up. Yes, I see it.
I'm Mayor Dursho, town engineer for Newton. Uh, Newton's project, uh, it runs the, the town hall. It runs the Newton Town School and it fronts the LDS church ball field. Then it gets Main Street and goes south to Bursell. You'll see there's, there's Newton Town Hall. There's the church and the church ball field. The Newton Town Store is right here. Uh, the road is fairly narrow. Um, it experiences traffic, traffic, traffic. Farm equipment, semi trucks. Uh, it's in pretty bad shape. Uh, we do the town does its best to try and do fraction while maintaining the best it can. Now, that was the small, small towns funding is, is a it's hard to get to, so. Uh, same on this bigger project, you want to widen this, this west side of the road here will accommodate the turning radius that are the traffic tractors that come through there. As well as pedestrian traffic, a lot of parts, parts of this over there. Uh, we've seen a lot of kids accessing the store there. So most folks kind of park right in front of the store over here. They park on the side of it. Our intent is to widen the road, fix the shoulders and create a pathway to save the kids and the bicyclist and passersby for as well as those folks who go to see the town hall or the public meetings. We do want to widen to a thirty-two foot section in there. Uh, so it's wider than typical twenty-four feet. Well, you were asking for about, uh, two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. It's kind of about the bucket compared to the bigger boat, so not a huge ask. Uh, again, it's, it's, it will benefit the town, it will improve the road. Improve safety, widen things for those who have access here. Uh, somebody pictures. You can kind of see down here, the road's kind of falling apart on this west side here. This is kind of new here. Here's the west side of the road here of the town, the town market down there. Again, the road shoulders have fallen apart, the asphalt's going apart on. So the idea is to go through, turn their old, uh, reconstruct it with a new pavement session through it. Our geotech is, is, uh, insisting a twenty-one inch section, which is for his capsule for Newton. Probably trapped them through there, so. And then exhaust rectum of five inch pavement overlay, which is thirty's changing and for Newton. So just to improve the road, make it substantial and and have it in longevity. So this is back in nineteen, eighteen ninety-two. Uh, it was been well used, but usually near some air. So again, we're requesting just a minor amount of those, those five funds to improve this road. Any questions?
Uh, did you modify your presentation to wear two hundred and two to the nine two eighteen?
Are we a two or two four?
Yeah, that's what I have on here based from the application. I'm just trying to check, see.
We'll check and we can move that. You have a question down there? You want to.
Basically, you're gonna pull Brian's guitar role.
Is my question?
Yeah, Malva's next. Chinese day. It was just second trying to switch. I'm sharing with you, uh. Sorry, this.
Mike, the next one up is Malva. Let me know if you can get it. Those online are.
Yes, I can get it.
So I might have to run it down.
For this.
Yeah. All right, sorry for the.
So town of Amalgas, we have a small search improvement project in Amalgas. This one begins down just north and forever here and goes to UDOT Highway two eighteen. Then just to six fifty-five or six fifty-four. In the past, Matt, uh, they probably offered and have actually sponsored this project here, chip and seal. This down around here. It's up to here and ship, that's still, that's a great job. Good contact, which has been huge improvement. We've also completed one point from here up to downtown threaten. So this, this piece here in the black segment, correct, Mayor? Ship seal, it'd be done. Now town's gone through and it has done some improvements down through here. By the church up at here, there's a few repairs down here. They've already made the fire, fire, fire problem. So our intent is again to come through, widen some areas, sections of road that are kind of falling off the side of the road shoulders, kind of have the problem and packing, run over that. There's the muck farm right here, muck dairy. Uh, they have a lot of large quips running down our road. There's a far, so we want to go through and just put a good chip cell and fix the, fix the potholes in. Again, you kind of see this is, this is the muck dairy guy here. He waved at me. And this is some of the trucks that pointed out of there. So we want to, if you want to just get, get a put a new surface chips on the defaults later on, then put a page mark on, just to prove it. Give it a better life on it, improve the, the service. Um, we're asking for about a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars nationally matched about a hundred and eighty, hundred and eighty thousand. About a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars, nationally matched about a hundred and eighty, hundred and eighty thousand.
That's AI for you.
All right, well, so we've asked me for more than we get, how's that sound? So anyway, we're asking for again, a, a minor amount of care for the entire project, so. And we want to improve that road section. Just to get them off, you kind of see, you know, this, this area right here is just on the border of the bridge. You see it's kind of sparring, falling in there. We want to take that road and my bear sits right in here, most areas right there that road is pretty bad shape. So part of this is that. We're going to cross, we'll cross you, that we talked to you, you know, up there, we will not ship solar session. Except across the UDOT right away, go north from there. Uh, here's, here's New Dye intersection right here, so we'll save that one. Where you can see some of this section in the town, the roads. It just, it just needs to get such a fair, just tracks on, just search off. You know, prove that rule the next few years, so. Any questions on that?
You guys know anything about funding the last year?
No. Yeah, please take a picture of that there, person. I'll get back to you.
Okay, thank you. How are Logan's next with both of theirs?
Okay, this will look very familiar, you guys have all heard. Both of these speeches, but um, we'll start with the twelve east three one hundred north roundabout, um. Okay, so just first an update on our other cog projects. We're nearing completion on the twelfth east construction, we had some really significant. Land acquisition issues with that, but we're really excited to um. To provide this connectivity goes twelve east, as you probably know, goes all the way from fourteenth nor, or sorry, fourth north. All the way up to. To this point where we're talking about this roundabout and then extends into. Um, Hyde Park, second east, um, if you remember, we previously got funding for design and right of way acquisition. Um, we sold them all the property owners along there, including, um, worked with, with Logan staff in. Um, acquiring those rights of way, um, and we anticipate those all falling into place, we've had very positive interaction. With those property owners, um, and then we'll go out to bed once funding is secure for this road section and then sixties is completed. Um, it's been a really great project and we've touted it far and wide as, as much as we can that this is a cog funded project. Um, and so we're really grateful for that. All right, so this is um, a roundabout that's right on the edge of Hyde Park and. Um, North Logan and then also the county land, um, it's. Like, as I mentioned before, it goes from fourth north and Logan all the way to the edge of Hyde Park. And is ultimately planned to go through Smithfield, thirty-one hundred north is a regionally significant road. And has four thousand vehicles per day, um, and then also a lot of other sort of, uh. Active transportation, um, along our. This is a, this roundabout comes with some forethought by our city staff, we've acquired the. Rights, rights of way from the property owners along the, this intersection. Um, it connects to the county's project just north of this. Um, and will be an important part of moving traffic along that north south corridor. Um. Let's see, so this is, this is the direct route from um, our east bench to Green Canyon High School, it gets backed up. Today, and this will really help um, with the teenage drivers that are navigating that every single day. Um, the two-way stop is really is, is insufficient at this point, so we're looking forward to the improvements of a roundabout. Uh, we're requesting one point one nine million. Um, we're matching it almost a hundred thousand, so our, and our total project costs is. Any questions on this one? Okay, this is one that you've heard me speak to quite a bit. But uh, as you're all familiar, second east is originally significant road, it's Wolf Pathway. Through North Logan Hyde Park, um, and eventually becomes Bobcat Way in Smithfield. Um, we've invested thirty-six million dollars into this, this road to date. Um, it significantly reduces the main street traffic. And it's number one priority road for our regional mobility on our CNPO list in Cash Valley, so. You've all heard me testify to the importance of this road, um, it. Um, it to get more specific though, it adds, it makes second east behind Walmart in North Logan. Um, it makes it into five lanes, so. Two lanes in either direction with a turning lane in the center, and this extends all the way south of fourteenth north. Um, to the Culvers driveway, so about thirteenth north. Um, this is a joint project with, with Logan City. Um. As you've all heard me mention before, Highway ninety-one is currently failing and second east is currently failing, uh, most times of the day that you drive. Through this intersection, um, you see a lot of cars backed up, especially going north, um, right next to Culvers. Um, and there's a lot of pedestrian traffic there as well. Um, there's a lot of development that's coming in Hyde Park in North Logan, um, and also in Logan City. Uh, as we all are eagerly anticipating targets coming in just south of this. Um, with uh, about four hundred units of housing expected to come into there. Um, we are requesting two point eight million, um, if you recall the COB orders, um. Kind of remember the two point eight million, sorry, and then we matched two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Our request this year is four point seven million, the local match up three hundred and sixty-six thousand. Um, this is shovel ready, it'll take a year to finish, the designs are complete and the right way acquisitions are almost completed. Okay, any questions on this one?
I put you on spot.
Yeah, you bet.
Prioritize.
Oh, you know my answer to that, Craig, that's a softball, um, we, I think that two hundred east is on the top of all the list for a reason, so. I, it's a, it's a really significant road. But if I can just make a plug for the twelve east project, it. We put off the county last year for this project and the roundabout is a necessary part of that, of that improvement, so I'm just gonna.
Joint venture there.
Yeah. Yeah, so I'll give you the beauty pageant answer and say they're both really great. But if you make me two hundred east. Any other questions on that?
Can we see the budget numbers while, while you're still, if we go back eight, slider, maybe, where are your friends?
Again, we all know this is a great project, there's been some discussion as to whether you dot could perhaps add this to their. You know, X to Y, improving options on means instead, and you passed for one extra year due to the complexity of the project. I just, I mean, I, again, you've all worked to see if perhaps we'd be taking you out to fund it, which would be a huge advantage to all our budgets. Um. Again, I'm just afraid if we do fund this, that you guys are going to say, why should we take a look at it? So I think, again, it's a great project, we all know. It's just. You know, given that you're already requesting another year to do the project. Do we try and? Wait a little bit longer and see if we can bring you dot on board, um.
And I did not kill whatsoever, they had any intention of it was like.
Yeah, so. And to clarify, we're not asking for another year to work on this, we're saying it will be done here, so. I, I would just say it was urgent last year. So putting it off in addition, we are really a viable option in my opinion. So, um, so that, no, I've really appreciated the mayor's support and, and unanimity in coming to you dot. I, I would love any sort of weight to throw behind this, um, uh, my last. Communication from Rob White was, no, we're not going to. And um, I, I think that this is something that we all need to get behind and that we all need to have. More of a valley wide conversation because I think we came in late to the game on this one and. And so you dot tends to prioritize the projects that they see as needing to be funded, I think that conversation needs to involve. The CNPO, the COB. And that hasn't really been taking place up to this point, so.
Mr. Bort.
Yeah, so I would say if, if the mayors want to throw support towards um, towards you dot funding a portion of this or any amount of this. I, I would love to lead that, we've already submitted a letter on behalf of all of the mayors. Um, but that to me is the solution is to unite once again and say, no, but really, we mean this. Um, and if that were to happen, if we secure ultimate funding, we would immediately. Obviously really push the funding from COB, but we're just not in a position where we can take a baby.
We've talked about this, as, as I'm trying to be a guy and I talked about it. And we looked at it and said, okay, if, that's a big if. Include anything that would naturally fund next my projects in mind. What would we do, I mean. It's, we, it's a hope, we, we aren't going to give it up, it's put in fight. But. If they do. But we still got money in place. Roll that money down.
Yeah.
It's just not going to go away, it will flow down.
And just so the mayors know, I've been, in talking with Senator Wilson about, about securing funding for this, he's, he's appreciative of. What, how important this project is and that it needs to be part of this funding, so. So I'm, I'm not stopping my efforts on that front. And I'm all ears if the mayors have any sort of input about how to make that more effective or more persuasive or more productive.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hyde Park. Is next, and then after that, we'll do. I've already been doing a little confidence.
Thanks, everybody. Mayor Fox can be with us tonight, so. Yep, I'm city administrator here, represent project Jeff Nelson, there's, was in here. I'm going to let him present. Fun stuff, and then I'm here to answer any question. Awesome, thank you, so I'm presenting on Wolf Pathway, um, Hyde Park City presented it as two separate applications, a part A and part B. We're going to try to do both in five minutes to. Keep us in movement, so, Paracord Funding wanted to touch on real quick for Hyde Park City. In twenty twenty-three, they received funding for a seven hundred east project. Um, the project has been completed, you can kind of see it in the picture. Um, last disbursement request was submitted to COB in September. Um, and from the money we received, we're anticipating um, being able to return about sixty-five thousand dollars back to the COB. So project location, um, part A is in Hyde Park from first north to four hundred north, and then part B is from four hundred north to four hundred north. Project need, um, again, highly ranked project on the CNPO ITP list. Um, it's in the pink box here, uh, the phase one project. Um, so wonderful alternative north-south corridor through Hyde Park connecting Logan, more Logan, Logan Hyde Park, Crystal County. Plan improvements, it's a ninety-nine foot plan right of way similar to Wolf Pathway that's been built through, uh, North Logan. So two or three twelve foot traveling with center turn lane, two twelve foot parking areas, park strips. On the east side will be a ten foot wide asphalt shared use path along the west side, there'll be an eight foot sidewalks, lots of room for. Active transportation options as well, which will complete a very nice trail corridor eventually from Smithfield all the way into. The project group was talking about, um, second east and then Walmart, the future target, all that. Um, so more zoomed in approach, um, on the project plan, so we see phase A, phase B. Moving through here with the projects. So phase A, again, from where, uh, the road currently ends. Over the four hundred north with intersection improvements on three hundred more than four hundred north. And then phase B from four hundred north to forty-four hundred north. With the roundabout for a future connection, well, that's five hundred north. Unless the road that crosses is just north of the airport. Then it connects down into four fifty north and Hyde Park, which was all around. Pretty aerial view of, um, what would be phase A. Most of it was phase B of itself. Phase B kind of end of that bar there. So I'm going to talk about funding, um, we're presenting. Part B first, um, because I'm sure the question will get asked, which one is the city's priority? I mean, what the city would ask for priority at this time is to get funding for part B on before part A. Um, there's, we've both financial and timing implications for that reason. Um, but the COB request is just over five point five million with a local match of. Uh, almost four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, part of that is. The city working with developers, so this is a brain hurt of the brain first development in Hyde Park. The city's actively working with any developers that come in to participate in this project, um, as part of this development, move. Worked with the developer to build the full half section of the road, so forty-nine and a half feet, and that's. For them to build all the asphalt, create other mark strip and sidewalk on their side. To be built, yeah, hasn't. Haven't started the stretch, yeah, but that's, it works maybe. Um, and then just that's, if any other development must have come through, Hyde Park City would work in similar manner, but hopefully helps save the COB money. Um, so part A, project cost. Plus four point four million, a local match, three hundred fifty thousand. And then a similar way, um. The Hyde Park City has worked with this, what's called the gateway development to the south. And worked with that developer to fully build seven hundred fifty feet of this corridor. So saving. I guess around a million dollars from this project. The city's not having, the COB's not having the building, because this developer built this section for them, so. It's not included in our request or match or anything like that, but. We did want to bring it up as a way Hyde Parks work with developers to help build the road and save. Optimum, so. Schedule, um, working through design right now on the project, and this will go for both of them, of course, it is. Uh, will fluctuate based on funding. Um, but work through design, um, bid the project first twenty twenty-seven and build from. Twenty twenty-seven as well, so. This last slide, which I guess got converted to PDF or video, so probably not going to play. Um, but it was a very pretty video that hopefully distracted, we wanted to ask for questions. Maybe this would be a, this is a boring spot.
Sorry, didn't, I could not.
I guess what was asked for questions.
There's questions, um, on part B, it sounds like the alignment of where you're coming to Smithfield. Not really been agreed upon. By both candidates. And then, and I'm my second, and then again, if you pardon me first, at least a big section in the middle that's uncompleted. And again, you're, you're wanting to move ahead with that, this developer will do those improvements, doesn't the developer have to do that anyway, whether or not? You know, anything else is.
So my understanding is they want to have, there's, there's a section that wouldn't have to build because I think by law we can't. Require them to build more than thirty-three feet. So a portion of it, yes. But also if this developed, if the city didn't work with this developer to come in, they may have never built it, so. Um, it's a tiny thing, as far as the alignment in the Smithfield, yes, that's still being worked on by. Uh, part B is for the northern boundary of Hyde Park City.
Right, but again, if you did part A first, that would give you additional time to really try and work out. Where it next on, which seems like would be more advantageous in the on there.
Yeah, I mean, either way, we, we take A or B, um, this is a project that will a lot of momentum in the city, we're. Really excited for it, we're actively pursuing right of ways of both segments, um, we're just a little more confident that we will have.
Really excited for it. We're actively pursuing right of waves of both segments. Um, we're just a little more confident that we will have. Part E on the right of way, partner, and if we finish up or wrap up a nice new package in time with the twenty twenty-seven funding. Um, but. If we get funding for A, we'll shift our focus and get that one done.
And how would the developer participate if he did, um, part A?
Um, so in part A, we don't have any active application for development right now. It was we were working with individual property owners. As we mentioned, this development right here, it's already done, and we're not counting that towards contributions or matches.
Could you require them to dedicate the right of way as part of their development?
Oh, sure, yeah, any development that wants to come in during the approval process will help. Dedicate improvements and right of way just as well as anything else, but right now we don't have any. Open applications, and so there's no. Uh, exactly, exceptions that could be made right now, we're just approaching the property owners and seeing. If they'd be willing to donate right of way to help contribute towards our match contribution. Do you have road impact fees in Hyde Park? And if you did, if the CAG was to put this in when the developers came in, would those road impact fees go back to the CAG?
No, that's that's not. We have a road.
Just curious.
Great question, though. Absolutely, yeah.
I'm guessing you can.
That's a question that probably affects every single project in in the this year and years past.
I have a question about your entry into Smithfield. I don't recall which map you put up, but you showed a significant jog. Going east. Did you put that back up?
Yeah, that's the current CNPO family regional transportation plan.
That's part that's subject to that.
No, it's one that has the line that. Yeah, right there. Right after your project area, it showed the jog. I don't know how many feet, and then it comes into six hundred. South, and I guess that's what you're saying is you haven't made an agreement on that. Um, but it looks like the further we go north, the more that becomes. Um, problematic, because if we're gonna go east, we probably wanna gradually go east. Rather than have a jog like that in the road.
That that's just the current Cami RDP. I I don't think it would be built like that, because.
Agreed it won't be built like that, but your project area. Kind of defines where we have to make that adjustment, doesn't it?
Yeah, yeah, if if you're saying by doing this, the project's over there. Curve down to first east or up.
Well. Yeah, what I'm saying is. Wouldn't you want to start the curve further north or further south, so that if you didn't have to such a jog there?
Your question with the engineering.
Pardon me?
Your question with the engineering.
I am concerned about whether that gets to six hundred south or not in Smithfield. And I think that's a situation that Smithfield needs to look at, because I think if you try and go further west. You're gonna get into some residential areas that conflict with the roadway, so.
A- absolutely, that's something that is tangible set as far as where to put that curve and. And how to make that go into whether it's first east or two fifty east. It could go further south or it could go further north.
On your your exhibit. Part B, if you address whether you're going east or west. Because I I think that may be within your project area. Now, that is an engineering issue. But I think we we want to know when we. Um, prioritize your funding, that that is resolved one way or the other, at least I do.
Yeah, excellent.
I think the the eastern route has already been planned and houses built front on that road at this point. They put their backyards to the road, correct? Two fifty, oh, if that's where you're going, I would expect to see a nice connection in your project area.
Right, so one of the reasons that we're applying for the funding right now is because. It's two-year money, right? So two years is a long time. We fully expect to have all this thing is aired out by them. They're all in the process. I don't know, Watson, so there she can speak to this if she wants to. We were working with previous county executive. There's a. Study that's underway with some funding from the CNPO to figure out that connection to see if. So I shouldn't say if, how um, that needs to change to make it better. Um, but where. See two-year money, we're pretty sure we're gonna have that wrapped up before twenty twenty-seven. And we're confident that we can work with our neighbors that have a solution.
Right, go back to party and have some question here, so. Given that you said there was imminent development right now, I mean, is the plan is just to fill the asphalt out? And then later and have the developer come and put the curb and gutter in, or?
Yes, and.
And how would you make sure development could.
So part A does not have any active development, right?
The the only way is by the ones that have been, but it was already such a missed one. Where I'm not having to know this, as far as this. We're building the full cross-section because there are no plans that we want for any of these people.
Most of them, we talked to gave a similar answer to Smithfield, basically build well, we might then buy. It's just.
How fastly do we want the corridor versus gas?
So we have, we have a precedent, for instance, that two hundred east corridor through North Logan's. They built the roadway section as that developed out, they required developers to kind of build with urban gutter and that kind of thing, so. There are, there are finds of development.
That that's how the previous section of Wolfpack Way to develop. Yeah, it seems like you're giving property owners just a real benefit here by building the road and all the way out in curb and gutter. Like holy balls, I wish I had property on that. That you were.
As do I.
Yeah, like that just seems a little ludicrous to me, to be honest.
And it's just, do we wanna complete project or partial project and then have to be a.
Well, isn't it a situation where you have to put a legal document down that says that. That if you build along the roadway, you're going to contribute something and describe what the contribution is.
Some pioneering agreements, but a pioneering agreement. Pardon me, a pioneering agreement.
One format of it, yeah.
And but I think that question could be asked every project in here, that's what's doing.
And maybe they'll ask it on every project, but this one's an obvious one, that that ought to occur. Because we're going through undeveloped land that is on the cas of being developed.
Good questions being asked. Put me on the spot, I realize that, uh, but these are questions, good questions, can't take into consideration your. Uh, ranking, because what you're pointing out is exactly what I want to have pointed out was needed to everybody. Before you rank, this is third. Visual of what we're seeing and the questions are legit. Uh, should challenge these gentlemen, that they're bringing forward. Shouldn't the question be able to make pretty determinate thing and rank?
I agree with you, but my ranking will depend significantly on what. Uh, effort you may raise portion of the money to project. And we have a relatively small contribution coming in on those two. And I'd like to see more contribution, even if it's a long wait. In years or something, I'd like to see something come back. So that will affect my range and.
That's what I'm saying, so what you're doing is you're putting an ad sign out there that you can't put out there. We're having presentations to make a decision on that. And we received enough information, in my point of view, that we can make that decision.
And I'm saying, I appreciate you, but I'm also saying that even forth of my rating.
Yeah, we're saying the same thing.
I don't understand the confusion with the maps, we're gonna be putting forward the eight percent is required by.
Right, what, the question here, let me summarize, because they can get your headline right there. You got undeveloped ground on both sides, which are gonna benefit tremendously from this road. That is the concern of the CAG members. Because we're basically putting money towards something that developers could shoulder in the future. And that's the question everybody's raised here, am I missing it?
And then Hyde Park's gonna benefit from from the road impact fee.
So.
Lifelong question of what comes first, development or the need for the transportation network? We, that's been that lot, the million dollar question that comes up every year is. As you weigh, is you do you wait for them? Their development to build that, or is there enough of a need now that the CAG feel is worth the investment? To put the money towards the four.
That's true, but we're also operating now in a different environment we have in the past. We don't have a lot of funding we're gonna need, so these questions are not. Hitting anybody down. They're to give us answers at this time of how. For example, I know exactly how I'm gonna write, because I I can see what I'm not liking. And I'm sure the rest of you are seeing the same thing, but. And it's, it's the fact of the matter is, we've got a very difficult to say here, my dear. And he's got a gentleman brought for his presentation, what they would like to have sit down for Hyde Park. And there's some serious questions here about developing opportunities for terms. I mean, somebody offers right money, anyone who's developed has been said, oh, yeah, I'm gonna take that. And then we already put the road. Urban gutter and sidewalks, bike lanes, everything involves. So we just need to prioritize substantial. The CAG pointed here, when we have other funding. Is that we might have to let go, so. I think we got our end, we got, maybe this question, or something else on this. We wouldn't have to do it through some sort of pioneering, because cities only have whatever is required. Dedication or improvements if they have a. Uh, application in, and that's what they have, and so you'd have to figure out some sort of. Pioneerian agreement that land development happens somehow. Or or you just say, we're only gonna build this much, and then it's just a given, that when development comes, they have to deal with the rest. I mean, that off, that often happens, you just build a smaller section. But it's all a question of timing, you know, if you're willing to wait or not. And that's a. That's a policy question for the city and P O. Or then the CAG.
I think it's good to raise these questions along the group, so that you're not, you know, I I appreciate that. I appreciate being able to speak to them, so. So I think there are good questions to raise while we can all talk about it, we can give the jurisdiction, the ability to speak to that.
Okay, but I think we've covered enough on this one, unless there's something more serious we've missed, let's move on to the next one.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Providence, and then after that would be River, would be Richmond, Harry.
Providence. You report on the prior funding that we had, we had, we were given money last. Last year, you reported last year, three hundred and sixty-five, we. Um. The design is complete, the project is ready to go out for bid during the fine bid season. But we have one property owner that is holding out on top of me, so we expect to have that. Resolved and acquire that piece of property and we will. Will have a bid that will be ready to be built. Um, the project that we have is third east in Providence. Um. If you look right here, um, the cemetery is up here, this is a. Um, north-south corridor on the east part of the city. It's between um, Center Street and Second North. We need this project, this is a a major corridor for people that live on the east side of the city. There is currently undersized for fu- future regional transportation needs. It's phase two of a project that has been funded by CNPO. And um. It's. Increases active transportation routes. This is the technical stuff, Jeff, I'm not gonna get into the technical.
Good idea, because I didn't wanna hear it.
So anybody technical wants to look at it, look quick, because I'm gonna take it off. These are kind of pictures I like.
Yeah.
Okay, so this uh, right here is, is, oh. I know. Well, I probably if I push down one. Okay, so this is Center Street right here. So any of you that have been on this intersection is kind of a cloying. Intersection, and so we're talking about fixing that, there's a ton of traffic that comes off of the hill. And comes down through here, and they either go to the right to go up first north, or go down Center Street to the schools. Uh, we're talking about having acceleration lane, a bike lane. On-street parking and driveway extensions to make this a better street. Um. As you move further north, this is a misaligned. Uh, this is a misaligned intersection right here, so we need to fix that. We're planning to put a very simple roundabout here, but it will increase the way the traffic flows. Again, um, we'll have a little park strip. And have a raised island here, an overflow line, a bike lane, we'll have a sidewalk on one side. And the bike lane on the other. Project cost is two point five seven seven, our local match. Um, is two hundred and seven thousand, anticipated full cost is. Twenty-seven, uh, two, two million seven hundred. So this is a picture of the existing road, you can see right here, the misaligned. This is, it's kind of a hassle, you can't see very well. Uh, and then the road goes up the hill, you can see how narrow it is right there. And so. Pretty narrow road, you have a lot of traffic. Project schedule. Design will start in June of twenty twenty-five and then November twenty of twenty-six. Light of way acquisition, July of twenty twenty-five, November two thousand. Twenty-six, construction bidding in January, as the magic turned and bid it out. Um, and then construction would be April twenty twenty-seven. Nothing technical, please, but I did bring my technical guide. Questions? Whoa.
Richmond and I never had two demands.
I'm Weston Ballong, Richmond Cities engineer, we're here to talk about the three hundred north extension project. Um. Eventually.
Right, right. April opportunity.
Okay, so. As I think all of you know, Richmond is growing significantly, and a lot of that growth we're seeing is up in this northeast corner of town. We have several new developments up here, um. Even more since this this picture's been taken, we also have Cherry Peak Resort at the Canyon. That that draws a lot of traffic in the summer and winter, um. We actually just did some some traffic studies uh, throughout Richmond as part of Transportation Master Plan, will be wrapped up in November. We get at times about thirty-six hundred trips per day on Main Street in Richmond. So the project that we're discussing today, to deal with growth, fortunately Richmond City's been pretty proactive in their infrastructure. To deal with growth, fortunately Richmond City's been pretty proactive in their infrastructure improvements. Um. Three hundred north, this this, so this is the. The Transportation Master Plan out of the most recent general plan. The um. This is the road we're talking about here, three hundred north. So we'd like to continue that from State Street to the highway going up to Idaho. Um. In the last year or so, this yellow section. Richmond City has procured the right of way through that yellow section through some some land swaps. Uh, we are looking for funding to procure the right of way through this last remaining red section. You can see here, this is the parcel map. That shows where Richmond City have have procured their eighty-foot wide um, parcels that Richmond City has procured for that right of way. We're asking for for this section here. To accomplish this, we're asking for hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars. The uh, the total project cost is a hundred and sixty-nine thousand. Um. Like I said, we're working on our Transportation Master Plan now, we'll be looking at um. Impact fees towards the end of the year. Uh. Any questions? That's. Pretty brief. Project.
Do you have a sense of how those negotiations are going to go?
We're committed to, it's a great question, and we have met with the landowner. Um. And it's gonna take some time to work through some items. Um, it took us about eighteen months. To work through the first two acquisitions, they were done in separate tranches. We actually. Traded some land along another city street. Those went fine, there were lots of family members involved. We worked it out, uh, I'm happy to say, and we have spoken with the owners, uh, I think it takes. But I'm confident that that we can look something. What, what you, can you go back to that?
Yeah, right now it's kind of a ride one, right?
Yeah, that's right.
That's what you're requesting, right? Development. Purchase the right ways.
The right way and and engineering.
Yeah, and the engineering that we're asking for, just to get to this application.
The transportation plan is, will be completed completed in November. Uh, you know, there are no city services in this area at all. So we would definitely be looking at. You know, the range of impact fees that we need, perhaps even a. A road impact fee for the developers, cuz obviously. Once that road is put in there, it will be prime for development, so. In all fairness, that is, that's right.
So you'll be handing. That land on that. Yeah. Once you develop that, it will go, because you have lift on the land, but it's pretty big.
I can't answer that question. Uh, because. Uh, as I mentioned, uh, right now, there's no, there is no access. Uh, I would think so, but I'm not an abrazer, can't give you that answer.
But it's a little different with rights, versus putting a max.
The actual.
Yeah.
And that's the, the purpose is to provide another. Option for people to to access the northeast portion of town. And also Cherry Peak Ski Resort, so it's. It does appear to benefit the the landowners down here, but they they still have a significant hurdle to develop that. We don't have sewer there, could don't allow stations, Richmond City, so there's. We don't anticipate. Immediate development following construction. Better in. It's it's really the the main purpose is to provide access to that.
Yeah. Long way down the road, maybe, so to speak, are you anticipating a signalized intersection there?
Why don't you answer that question?
So we met with David Augers, was UDOT, looking at potential accesses and lights there. Um, you can see on our master plan. This road up here is also planned to go in at some point. That would be more risk, more realistic for a light. If we, if if, the way that the speed limit is set up now. Uh, we were too close to the light at Maverick, at another light at three hundred north. That could change in the future if they reduce the speed limit through that section. But right now, that's that's not part of the plan. Thank you.
River Heights and then Cash County would be next.
On behalf of River Heights City, my name is Craig Rasmussen, I'm their city engineer. And I'm excited to be here today. This is River Heights City's first um. Application for a cog project. So uh, be generous with us with that. Um, but this project is a six hundred south, seven seventy east of in the street improvement project, it's a. Primarily a pavement widening project with um. Some non-participating funding for other landscape and sidewalk improvements as well. There's a project area, um. River Heights Elementary School sits right here. Um. This is River Heights on the north. Uh, bounded by Providence City on the south. South right-of-way line of the roadway is the Providence River Heights boundary. Yeah, that's the the section of road we're looking at, about thirteen hundred feet. The purpose is a need is to to widen the the roadway to be put with um, street. Um, replace the efficient pavement. Uh, the south part of the road is is um. Been there a long time, uh, it's in not necessarily failing condition, but not only is it too narrow, but. It also is is deteriorating. Uh, there's an increasing amount of traffic in that area, not compared to. Some of these presentations we've heard tonight, but significant for. Uh, River Heights Providence Board or the Providence City projects, um. Unless that's for all the project, just all the traffic just going south. Will also increase project or traffic volumes in in this area, obviously the. Elementary school, there's also increasing traffic coming to the elementary as well. Um, was that the need, uh, you know, like. I'll make, I call it intercity regional traffic, uh, it's not. Uh, bringing traffic from parks to everything else, but basically. The southeast bench of Logan, um, some River Heights traffic, in fact, I would argue about. After this project, the majority of the traffic is from um, out of River Heights community. Project scope was to um. Overize all of the existing asphalt, uh, there's some. Cross-sloping things, issues that doesn't really lend itself to just widening to the south side. You need to, you know, uh, pavement conditions and also. Grades and things need to match, and there's existing curb and gutter sidewalk on. North side that was widened out and built with River Heights City development. Uh, this is pertaining to Brenner to the south side and then. Uh, stormwater will be. Uh, collected along the the south part of the road and um, tied into. Existing stormwater, food facility, it's already from the north side of the street. Thanks. So here you can see. The funding request, uh, the project costs. About seven hundred and fifty thousand. Um, this is, is called, it is limited to a spot improvement. Uh, because the project's not on the C M P O long-range plan. Um, prior to this, um. The development in Providence on the south side of the street, where additional right-of-way was dedicated. Uh, the right-of-way width uh, was inadequate to a. To uh, the work for a C M P O project, and so. Uh, we have requested C M P O add this to. Uh, their for long-range plan, so right-of-way width is now sixty-six feet. Um, and. Uh, you can see. So we're significantly, this is the six hundred nineteen thousand is the eligible funding. Eligible items for uh, for funding. After four hundred thousand, um. Yeah, so River Heights City is looking at contributing a significant amount for the, for this widening work. Existing conditions, this first picture is from the elementary school looking east. And then this is uh, the um. Just along the corridor of the project, about halfway through. And. One more. This is the tenth east intersection. And with um. Another intersection from existing on the north side of the street from River Heights. With existing road conditions, you can see this is um. Dedication from the Providence City Development now widens out, so we have a right-of-way to. Do this work. And I already mentioned, this is the corporate boundary between there's River Heights and Providence. Oh, and I left picture looks familiar, I think I've seen that before.
Yeah, and I guess my question, this is a brand we felt, I mean, there were fresh, I was. To put a base portion of the road in there. Why, I mean, I realize it's on the boundary, but.
Yeah, I I, it's a great question, um, that question is a. Absolutely valid question, um. Uh, the jurisdiction, again, the south side of the road is in Providence City. Uh, River Heights City cannot require. Providence City to require their developers to build improvements outside of their jurisdiction. Uh, previous administration, when the. When this development for the south was in planning processes. Uh, tried to negotiate with the developer to to build those improvements. Um, ultimately, they ended up just walking out because. We can't force them to do that. Initially, they were. Open to that, there was a lot of ongoing discussion, and eventually they. They walked on that, um, and when when Mayor Wright, um, um, even as the mayor. Administration went back to the developer to try to. Negotiate and and work with that, and uh. They did commit to providing sidewalk from here. Over to the elementary school.
And it looks like they have an outlet. Onto this River Heights Street currently that's blocked off, I mean, is that any kind of a negotiating point?
That was one of the negotiating points, that's the only, that was the only thing that River Heights had. To to work with because. Because it wasn't required of the development, so. The way that this could have been required of development, um. Is if it was put into the annexation agreement, outside of that, state law. Is not required.
Changed the boundary line to the middle of the street, instead of the.
Well, that's the other thing is, is if the annexation, if the boundary line had been adjusted. Uh, it's been on the south side for. Decades, and. But, so the annexation didn't change the boundary. I don't know if that's something that's a lessons learned. Um, you know, that's something that cities have discussions about repeatedly. Where should that boundary line be? If you're a long-term creates maintenance issues and things that have streets divided. In the short term, we get situations like this. Any other questions? Thank you.
Ash County and then Mendon. We'll be following them.
Last year, we gave the same presentation, so. If you've seen it, I I apologize, but my name's Matt Phillips, I'm with Cash County, I'm the Public Works Director. Our proposed project this year that we're requesting funding for is twelve hundred east. Go ahead. So we've had a lot of other projects that have kind of touched on twelve hundred east tonight, I know there's a roundabout projects and other projects. I wanted to show, this is a regionally significant road, there's been other projects, the C M P O. Cog, there's been a lot of money put towards trying to. Find another regionally significant road that goes from. Logan to Smithville, there's. Still a little portion. I'm gonna use the pointer in this portion right here that's proposed. But eventually this road should, if you get off on the highway up by, after you get some ice cream at Aggie Ice Cream and. You should be able to drive all the way to Smithville on this road, so. The portion that we're looking at, that's in the county, is the little pink piece, but our project goes. From thirty-one down to thirty-four. And kind of touches around about the North Logan's project is also. Looking for. Here's just a kind of a bulk of that, to help you guys see the kind of the jurisdictions, the. Green hatch is North Logan, the blue hatch is Hyde Park. And then the area with no hatch is Cash County. So. When this project came about, it's just a, one of these old roads that there's been a lot of growth around. And we all realize that it needs to be improved. So we partnered with North Logan. And like. Like I've heard someone else say, most of the traffic on this road, the Cash County scene is from the the neighboring developments. But a lot of these are the. You know, larger lots, the people have lived there for a while, and. They they don't have any desire to annex in necessarily, or they're not gonna. Come in and do a development any anytime soon, so. If we wanna try to keep this regionally significant road or try to build that to standards. Then. We're gonna have to put them on a little bit. Our proposal is this. To taking the twenty-foot wide asphalt to. This thirty-nine-foot. Cross-section, putting in bike lanes, curb gutter. I mean, taking that road from what it is to just make it a nice road that's. There forever. And. People can walk on it, people can ride the bike. Um, some of the road information, again, I I pointed out that it's an important corridor. It complements the other projects that have been done on this corridor. It it is part of C M P O's phase one regional transportation plan, this road is. Cog, it ranked eight out of a hundred and forty-five. Um, they're all classified as major collectors. Even Hyde Park classifies their portion going north, and here's an arterial, so. Again, here's, here's another picture showing this one, regionally significant, this one even shows kind of a portion of. Of. That we still need to probably connect, but even Smithfield's. Preserve this corridor and build that. Up into theirs past. Behind the golf course and almost all the way through Smithfield as well, so. Here's a picture of it, again, with operational deficiencies, the road's only twenty feet wide, there's no bike lanes, there's no pedestrian. The drainage, you can see there's no drainage, structural issues, and a lot of this. Portion of this road doesn't have. Sufficient right-of-way. Any questions on our projects? Yeah. So if we go back to this one to try to answer that. The portion is in green, that's. For the most part, that's in North Logan. So the matching rounds will share.
So I guess I could have. Asked the. The question about the transportation sales tax funds that were. Adopted by the Cash County Council last year. Over the, and they were allocated to. Primarily public safety, then it could have been all transportation. At that time, some of the county, when we know that was estimated to be six million dollars in the first year, except some of the partial sales tax year. The second year, up to nine million dollars estimated, so pretty big chance. At that time, when the mayors were so concerned, and the cog wrote a letter to the council and so on. About allocating that to public safety rather than transportation. Some of the county council members said, well, we can maybe at least put part of that. Toward. Transportation fund, but. They indicated, I think, that that would be on county project, so. Is that pool of money? Available for this project, since it is at least the county portion of that? It seems like a logical place to maybe use some of that.
I think that's a great question, and I. I wish there was some council members here that would answer that for you. But. We can pick on Dave, it's too long. But so far, Mayor, that. That split has been, the county has been collecting that money. But I have not got any correction from above me or. From the council, of how, if they're gonna allocate that money towards. Projects that I'm doing, if they're they're gonna give that money to cog. There hasn't been a lot of direction internally for that, so I can't answer. If that money could go towards this, or or how that money will be used, it can. Ob- obviously, I know we're all curious to see what happens with that other.
I should probably say that.
I should probably say that.
Six to nine million is a pretty significant amount.
I, I, I grant you that. There is no pool of money. They use that in the general fund. And, and that's where it went. They put it in public safety and that's reality.
And, and the tax commission requires you to put it in certain places. Again, that doesn't mean.
The requirement that it go into public safety. I'm not defending that. I'm just telling you, there's no pool of money, there's no cash sitting somewhere to do something. This little piece of twelve East is, is. Hardly the place to punish Ash County. Because it doesn't have anything, I mean, it, it's between your cities.
I, I, it's a good project. I completely agree. With limited funds, you have to look at all other kind of options.
I grant you that, but the reality is, is if we don't do this, it's. It's twelve East, it's between Smithville, Hyde Park, Smithville and the university Logan. So I think we want to get the project done. We're working to try and solve some of the financial problems in Cash County. That's what I would tell you. But there is no pool of money, and I think what we're trying to do is. Directly buy the situation as fast as we can.
And I would add to that, that this is money that Cash County for, for, they forwent that last year. When, when the project wasn't completely funded. And so that some other projects down the list could get funded, and so. I share your concern, your gains about the transportation tax or the transportation funds that were reallocated. But I think that this project application came in before that, so I don't think this is the hill. To die on, especially where it connects, connects our communities, you know, this isn't. This isn't a new county project that's being proposed.
It was a good question because we've got some information in our work.
Oh, I support the questions. I think let's air it out, you know, like I, I want to be able to talk about it.
Absolutely right too. I'm trying to say you're both right. There's good information we've got, but it's. It's something that we can't solve here at all. Obviously, I don't. Support shooting the messenger because of something.
I appreciate that, Mayor. I think that's the ultimate in the room, right? We're all wondering how that transportation tax will be used in the future and. How, how that will affect the ball, so.
Oh, I do understand what it was very clearly. I don't care what the problem is and why nineteen mayor. Nineteen zip what I've complained about. I do understand that. That's a reality is there's no pool of money. The county need to get a financial house in order. We're working on it.
Well, we appreciate your efforts.
Yeah. Any other questions remain? I know one of the things that we're supposed to report on is some of our active projects. The county has a couple of those. One of those is with Richmond, where on the, the road going up to Cherry Peak. So I know you don't, just because we're the sponsor, Mayor, doesn't mean you weren't part of it.
You sent us the final bill.
That project is done, so, yeah, so, so there is, alls we're waiting for is that money to. Get sent back to the cog for reimbursement, so. We don't, we're not, there's no money outlined there. The other one is an older project that where we have eight hundred west right-of-way at the south end of town that's kind of with Nibley and Logan. We've been trying to spend that money the best we can, but there's one property owner that we're trying to buy land from and no one can find. Him or get anything, but I, I do think that that was about three hundred thousand. Some of that money's gonna come back. There's just not enough right-of-way to buy there. But that one's just trying to close out some of those negotiations and. We have Mon's Corner money over on your way. The airport road by Daryl's Appliance to purchase right-of-way and that's well on the ways. Any questions on some of our outstanding ones? Then, and then Trenton is the last one, so the end was, the end is inside.
Eric, you're sorry again for Menon City. This, this. This project begins on Second West Amendment. Right here on Second West. It goes to about three sixty-four west right through here. The city shop. This is in, this is in the city's right-of-way, we, we. Downey is about right here at John Golden comes into there, and sure, well, this one's the last, so. This project again is in the city. The city, they have a city right-of-way, so. The project involves going through and improving this intersection down there to the west. You kind of see it comes up, which we're not even think that through. Intersections for hard visibility. People can't see coming down the road, they can't see from the traffic or. Right or left, so kind of a difficult project for a road. This is part of a phase project. This is phase one, we called it. This could be phase two or phase three and four. We're not sure, Mayor, how it will play out, so. There are some areas through this section up through here that's fairly narrow. Want to wipe the roadway at twenty-four feet, take through those there. You can kind of see through here in this picture that this is narrow through there. This is also the main route to Deep Canyon Trail, Wayne's Loop. You've probably all heard of that. The county is very familiar with that. This is the deep canyon facility is, is now almost nearly constructed. We're just waiting for some. Some payment, there's a payment. It was a very nice facility there. Again, this road is the main core road of that, that facility. Again, it's narrow. There are areas further west of us that rise over some hills we need to address to true. See fairly, see very, but that's, that's a different project. This, we want to simply. Go through and, and fix this intersection to here. So this is the new really intersection here. We're gonna wipe this out. You can see this current road right now. Intersects the property, owner's property. We're gonna, we're gonna take that of there. Fix that, increase that, and then there's a canal crossing right here. We worked with Matt in the past on. It was supposed to be funny there, but I guess it got away on that that didn't get to us, so. We want to do, we want to wipe this up. Right now, that intersection there, that canal is twenty-one feet wide, just enough to pass a tri-sit for a car, so. We want to take this out, replace that to forty feet and widen this intersection through there. And then widen and improve a little bit, show that there, so. Again, a good project, improve safety, improve access, mobility up through there. I did find out for clarification, this is the total cost. We're asking for. Eight percent less than I saw those numbers, so we're still good, we're correct in there, so that's what it was. The total cost is three nine seventy-nine. We're asking for three sixty, so we'll about eight percent match them. So this is a nice view down in Canyon, so. You can again see the, see this intersection through here, how it loops up, curves around there. Miss to here, and this is, this shed right here has got to go. We'll move that to idle someplace. Yes, it is. That's my property there. So we'll make this a good T-intersection, straighten this out, come through here, bring this down, widen this canal in here and widen the road. Up to the city shop. That should be a huge improvement, at least they did start on those improvements, so. Again, you can kind of see down bigger, this is looking, looking south. When it's, when it's grown over and the vegetations there are full grown, it's hard to see. The county is coming through into the stop sign up through here as part of the deep canyon drill. And they are improving the west end of the putting payment up top by deep canyon drill. This is intermediate intersection needing to breathe. Again, you can see this canal right here, intersection was crossing right here, very narrow. We just pulled a car out here about two years ago. We didn't make it. No, I pulled three cars out of there the last ten years, so it is narrow, it's, it's. We want to improve that, and we want to widen through here, you're improving shoulders on, it's a good road. It's, it's a safety issue, so give you bicycles. This is just scary, so. Any questions on that? Pretty straightforward, good point there.
Save the best for last. I'm Jacob Ains, I'm here representing Trump in town for our Anderson Road Improvement Phase Two. Here's a quick map of the project area. And our last year's project was from eight hundred East to twelve hundred East. And that has already been constructed, so we got funded last year and we built it this spring. And we're content on doing the same thing with this project this year. This is phase two, we will eventually, so. Four or five years ago, when I first met with Trent Towne, we had a master plan, what we wanted to do. They wanted to bring a project that came up from the south side of Malaga. Comes up over to SR twenty-three. Have a, they call it their southern corridor. And the intention of the southern corridor is to widen it out so there's room for two cars passing both ways. And room for cyclists because there are many cycling races that intend and want to go through this area for Trent. But currently, we're under capacity. For both the cycling races and the agricultural uses that are intended in this area. It's a major impact with infrastructure and economy of Trent. So this space is from eight hundred East to four hundred East, fixing up this intersection. And then phase three, and we anticipate phase three and four to get this all the way over to outside. So it's a little bit about the project, very similar to our previous one. The existing roadways is narrow sixteen feet in place, not sufficient for two-way traffic, as we've admitted. The edge of the asphalt is deteriorating on both sides of the road. Existing slopes on the edge of the road are too steep, requires them safe. This road is a school bus route and it's common. And it's a common heavy truck and agricultural route. Either irrigation canal and a ditch over it that will immediately dilute. And there's still a little clarity. This is the Ash County on question, and this is a irrigation ditch that's going well, right? Both of which are going to be impacted by this project. And we will widen the culverts, the retaining walls. It's gonna be the biggest project that Trent will see. Here are some quick exhibits from the plan set. It's hard to see from a distance that you're at, but this intersection has experienced significant flooding. Flooding over the top of the intersection, especially during large storm events. Will spring off, spring runoff, so. So we're gonna have to raise the intersection a couple of feet in order to prevent future runoff from going over the top level. That allows them to have culverts to be. And base form other irrigation water. Through the intersection underneath protective instead of affecting the fall. Over here, we can see a bit of where that canal crossing is. Again, it's hard to see from this is that you're at, there are significant. Those existing retaining walls, and because we have to build a roadway out, we have to remove the retaining walls and build beds. This is where a typical cross-section is gonna look like, we're looking at two fault foot travel lanes with two foot shoulders. And then shoulder in the part of our, so we have appropriate there's own. We asked for Geotech for the remainder of the project, so that includes Geotech for phases three and four. So we got all of that done already. Construction because of the, the actual, we're gonna have to bring in the culverts, the retaining wall. That is why the cost is so much more than our previous taxes. There we are, eight percent match, which for those of you in small towns understand that is a. So probably conclusion wrapping up. Increased safety capacity depends on our urban areas, so we thought back to the rural side. Now we intend on the construction. Any questions? You guys are really tired over there, really.
I'd thank the presenters today, the project and presented. Projects we've done very well. Appreciate what you've done, what you brought forth for cog. Five years ago, I remember we were sitting here. Prior to COVID, and we got the projects and everything else, and we had enough money to cover everything. That's not the case anymore, as you all can see, and it hasn't been since then. I just talked with Jesse, you know, we'll go through and over there are boats, we'll pave them to do and stuff like that. But I highly recommend, if you have questions today, reach out to any of these projects, talk to them, get some answers from them. As you do your set aside, as you do your rankings. Because once the rankings come back, as a cog, we have the right to change them at that point if we want. So don't hesitate to get some answers, you can find answers if you brought back. We'll discuss it as a cog, and we can change our rankings at that point. Jesse, you want to talk to me about that?
Yeah, again, as we leave this meeting, there'll be the opportunity for everybody to go out and rank the projects and we'll put together those scores. Once those. We'll compile all those, those set, be sent back out for everybody to review and to be able to see how, how the projects fell out. The state code allows that as long as we've gone through the process that we're going through, that. As long as there's a reason the cog could change that, that ranking, again, I think. Do that with good cause and we don't want to, we have the system in place, hey, let's hold up, but again, we understand that. That system doesn't account for everything, so if there's feelings from the mayors that. A different rating needs to be done. We did it last year. That's always a possibility for the public. Are you, we, anything else or? Yeah, we're, we're, we're almost there. I have Mark's office scoring sheets, if anyone would like them. Otherwise, you'll all receive an email first thing in the morning to be able to go in and put in. In your scoring online, and then we'll total those and put those into, to the master score sheet. We're asking that you please complete that by October tenth, that's the end of the week, so. That gives us time to compile those, get them put together and get that pushed back out to, to this body, so October tenth is the date. If you're not there, but you'll be here, you'll be getting a call from me, so we try to get all those back, so. October tenth, what we're shooting for there. If you have questions, if your links don't work during the issues, please let me know what. Issue we're shooting for works smoothly.
When you finalize your scoring, please send us Jesse's email.
It's on the score sheets too, to send me an email.
So just say my scores are in, I'm done. That way we know the memorial.
No, if you want to put play with it, have, be in there for a couple of days, we want to make sure you're done and that you're happy with your scores. As we look forward to the next couple of weeks. We will meet again in two weeks from today, that's October twentieth. We'll have the scoring complete, we'll know how the projects fall out. That would be the meeting that we're looking to hopefully have a recommendation from, from the cog to take to the county council. And then on kind of our council day, it's going to be October twenty-eighth or November fourth would be our hope to. Take that recommendation to the county council for, for final approval, so. I don't know if they, those are, the sooner we have the council, I think the better off, budget season, it's those things. So I think as we can, next meeting in two weeks, we can come with a conclusion and have a recommendation we feel good about, great. We probably try to shoot for October twenty-eighth, the county council. So, and that would hopefully, once we go to them, that goes smoothly, and that's kind of what we're looking at for. The next couple of weeks to get this year ground wrapped up. Mayor, that's all I have.
Any more further questions? I'd accept.
Maybe I missed this, are the president's presentations being available?
Yes.
Available to us so I can remember what I was thinking.
Yeah, so on, on the score sheets, again, we have the new cog website. You know, Cash County, there's a government page, you scroll down towards the bottom. And there's a Cash County Council of Governments, that'll take you there. The link's also on this, on your scoring sheets you'll get in the morning. And then we'll work on getting the video up, and with all the project, there should be somewhere where the slide decks will be there, along with. A link to the video so you can go ahead and read, re-watch, listen to the conversations that were had. That'll all come out tomorrow morning at some point. I do as much time as we can to let you review that and think for how you want to make tip on things.
No other questions?